It's three o'clock. We'll start the continuing meeting from March 23rd. The first budget workshop we have is starting to be. We won't forget. We kind of planned it out here was let Carla go through it. We all heard from the department heads last week and all up and explained to us how it affects us. And we'll go to where? Hold on, turn it over to you.
Okay, so we are currently looking at a forty-three million, four hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollar bottom line budget. That is what was advertised. I mean, that was what was presented at the March meeting. Um, there's a change in the general fund balance of we're we're having to pull one point two million dollars out of general fund reserves. It's funding four million dollars of CIP projects. It's funding um twenty-one point eight seven eight million for the school operating fund. Um, anyway, all the large funds total the forty-three million. And what we were gonna do today at the workshop is kind of um talk about what we want to do with that bottom line. If we want to make any changes at all, um they're going to be incorporated into what's advertised for the public here. We're going to get that information to the local paper by the end of the week. So I put together a spreadsheet here that's going to start us with the one point two million dollar deficit. And any changes that we make to the general fund, we're going to list here. So on this worksheet right here at the bottom is including, this is if we chose to include everything that was requested at the last budget workshop. Those are the costs for individual departments. Um, if we chose to change our COLA from seven percent to two and a half percent, we could recoup one hundred and fifty thousand. If y'all don't like that two and a half percent, I've got every scenario listed out. You can choose what you want. From bottom line total to splitting the five percent on the state to a different local uh COLA. Um, we had talked about reducing the personal property tax rate down to thirty percent, thirty percent decrease. If we change that to a twenty percent decrease, we would recoup eight hundred and thirty-one thousand. But again, I've got all the scenarios broken out. Um, if you want to look at different amounts of decrease, or if you want to go straight down to zero percent decrease, that's the amount of money you would, that's the difference in funds. Um, I had been asked about what if we just make bottom line cuts on all operating budgets? That's these amounts, but the point is we can play with these figures as we go along in this workshop. So you tell me what you want to fund and I will update this to refund it. Now turn it over to you.
All right. Personally, I would like to see us getting as close to zero as we can and not pull from the reserve. If we can get it some close. Perfect would be zero.
What would be their reason for that?
Well, I have a lot of citizens' contact. They they don't want to see us pulling from reserves with the current state the economy is in. I think it's a scary move to not have that there in case something goes wrong. And they really have charged us with balancing the budget.
Well, keep in mind, it is balanced if we use our own money still, but I think we've we've had multiple external experts come and talk to us over the past years. But we have so much more in our funds than we need, even in the worst of these scenarios. I also have people who are saying it's not very responsible unless you just let money keep sitting in the bank and it increases as well. But just don't use the money we have, that's what happened. So I just think there's two sides to that.
There is. I appreciate that.
Um, I think often people don't seem to understand what's being discussed because it is very complex.
We um.
Oh, it is right.
Um. I think it is complex. I see. And then we did it. We did decide a couple of months ago to take us our savings down to a thirty percent. And we are a little more over that. I will say that, but. I don't want to see us pull from the capital improvements to the to balance the budget. I think that ought to be there for. Something of citizen directly affects them, whether it's a new fire truck coming to them. If they ride back, if they ride to the dump and it's a bad day and it smells, I would say. Sorry, smells when I am going maybe to a new service, a new library, a new building or something like that. That's kind of where I'm at.
I think that's a fair point for receiving service. I think it's also important for us to remember there is no such thing as pulling from the CIP. We choose what we put into the CIC. And while historically money usually had to, which as I did every year from the landfill. That's just an arbitrary process. I think process or balance is an arbitrary choice that's being made too, so.
I would like to see us find different revenues.
Yes.
To put into the CIP. I think if we rely totally on the dump. Land that with with other landfills coming on board, we could reduce some contracts and then money might not be there. That's where I'm at. Um.
The suggestion helped head forward your direction to begin to begin with then. I think, you know, we started with the, I think a kind of a number out of the air, seven percent cost of the increase. Carla just mentioned she's got a bunch of different scenarios there. State settling at five percent number, we heard from the sheriff's office that it's very challenging for them when it's different percentages given. That favors the state because some are funded, some are funded by Concord, some are, some are next. I propose we bring that down to five percent uh equal to state amount. And I think that would, I think that would still be a good increase, um but I'll let's still.
One of best years when the state doesn't give a rat's ass in that.
I'm waiting for my next week. Budget. I know there's gonna be a lot of future.
I know, but you know. If they don't get one next year.
Then it's easy to adjust. So that's, so fix that. Let's say we start with a seven percent. And Carla's got the numbers that show how to do this on bottom line or stuff. You can still fix it. We can give our seven percent on the bottom line. So the total of the salary, what that means is unfortunate that's Concord. It's the five from the state plus two for us. For the rest is the full seven. So you can make, you can make it equal easy for numbers because again, she's got it.
Thirty-three thousand.
But um if we're trying to be more conservative, then you know, I don't know most of the people that are getting in the product here for getting seven percent rate. So I think we could look at that. So just for discussion one.
Why you guys going to discuss it?
Yeah, because I don't like the cost of living. I could do. So if it goes up now, what happens when it comes back down? Are you giving the money back? You're not gonna get it back. Once you give, it's gone.
Unfortunately, we've never seen it go down in our lifetimes, but yeah.
Yeah, but we've never seen it go up as high as this one either.
I I I agree with you and I think that's why I think five is there.
Two and a half to five.
Seven to five.
A seven to five, okay. Just the ones that don't get it from the state.
It, that would mean everybody would get it.
It would be the same thing. There's no difference in those statements because they're already getting the five from the state. It's just five percent. Yeah, the total five.
So that would give us access to that.
Nobody gets more than like it's less. Yeah.
I mean, uh, CIPs to um, I I've never been happy with the power of the CIP process works. It's interestingly, but um. You know, we had ten million dollars in our CIP. Um, the problem I see, I I know we save some in the future, but the money you spend today is money you save tomorrow. We keep holding on to money and paying two and three times the price for projects. When we get to them five years later, that's if we'd have bought it five years ago. So spending money on CIP today to save money, you could do more with money in the future. I'm not saying use it all. But um I do think that that we should uh look at that a little more heavily on what we need. And that would say, you know, if you look, we've got two point nine million for the radio system. That project, I I'm assuming that's estimated at about half. It's going to be probably a six million dollar project when the RFPs come out. Um, trying to to making the citizens fund that straight out of this, I think is is too much. The radio system, we need it. I don't think anybody's going to deny that we need it. Um, but that's not something tangible that the citizens can see that that they can use, you know, you know what I mean? It's it's for emergency services. Um, that is big projects. I think we, some of those big ticket things, what we need to do is pull those out. Actually borrow money, pay for them, get them going, and then you pay them back over time. And then you can pull in some of the other projects, some of these things of like bleacher upgrades. That's something people need. They can see it. I think that's a small, and that's just a quick example. Um, that way you could, the citizens will feel that they're getting something for their money. Um, even the uh, the uh. Animal control, you know, the renovation of that, a reasonable renovation, something like that that we could, that we could lump in and go ahead and pay for. Add in some of the other projects with the funds we already have. You know, that would, I I think it's win-win. We saved money because who knows what it's going to cost to do these projects three years from now? If we do them now.
It'll be less.
I'm not a big fan of Martha. I'm I'm.
It's less than today, but not less than now.
Honestly.
Well, so if you look at the facts, now is the absolute best time to borrow and when our rates are low, we've had the experts come in and talk to us too. Don't take advice of experts. We seem to ignore it often, but I think we also need to be clear that we're not taking the best advice that's out there.
But you got to pay for it though. Borrow it. Then we've got to pay.
At fixed rates that are lower down and it's sore. As they, as they, as an expert showed us last year, and you weren't in the session, you see, I weren't on board yet. We'll actually make more money over time because the rates of taxes and others go up while our fixed cost of loan tends to stay down. It was the conservative way to to go about financing. And it's part of, as Sean's saying, it's part of why we're in this hole with having so many CIP projects. Because if the county waits until you have enough funds in the bank to get them, you're wait, always waiting, you're always pushing something out five and ten years. And your inventory of CIP just continues to increase.
I mean, the history of CIP, if you look at the last ten years, when they, when they actually do these projects, they cost a lot more than what they projected when they started.
Um, you could fund all these. You said the CIPs got what, ten million? You could fund everything on his list with the CIP right now.
Right, right. But this is just, this is a short list.
Yeah.
This isn't the five year. You don't want to expend it all.
That's.
Not be able to do other, or there may be other things that you could roll in to get them done now.
Any question about that? So what, where is the ten? I hear that number when we've talked about it. Where is that on here? Like, how are you?
That's not in the current year budget. It's the fund balance in the CIP fund. Just like our general fund balance of nine million ish isn't on here, but it's what we got in the bank for CIP.
And how much of that is unallocated, I guess? That's that's the difference then, right?
Mm-hmm. Um, so we've got, I mean, all of it's unallocated until we decide what we're going to spend. We've got four point five million in the budget.
But if we put, if you bring more of that money in, you'd immediately go for what the Phil said earlier. You wouldn't have to pull anything from the general conservative stem, right? Because you're at this point, you've got some, you've got an amount offsetting from CIP's transfer amount. CIP, right?
So historically, we've gone back and forth with the fire truck. This is to the general fund, but we're going to pull money from CIP. And you're right, we can, we can take the landfill funds and put some of them in the general fund if you choose.
I'm not proposing.
But we've, yeah, we've always said they're not guaranteed. We don't want to use them to fund ongoing expenses.
Yeah, and that wasn't, that wasn't what I was proposing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Mm-hmm. Because I mean, I don't think we've had a balanced budget prior to twenty thirteen. I think as far back as that went without taking money.
Because that's.
Places to fund things.
If we think about our own lives, that's the same way most people operate too. If you, you create a budget and when the previous month passes and you have extra money left over, a few people just say, I'll never touch that again. Throw them out the window. You roll forward your excess money from the previous month into your next month. This is really just talking about excess money we've had from previous budgets. You're rolling it forward. It's not stealing or taking it from anywhere. I think that's where the concept continues to get really muddy out there in in the public is. So how much are we projected to be under, under budget for this current year?
I hate to throw a number out there, but I would guess we are going to put money back in the general fund this year.
And we already took, we already put one point, how much back?
Um, one point, oh, a little over a million.
Right.
One million eighty-five thousand.
So these are all the funds we're just putting back because we've already underspent. And if you want to go back to twenty thirteen, I mean, it's, I don't have every year, but almost every year. We underspend our budget, which is a great thing, by the way. To me, to be clear, I think we, I think we should. And our revenue almost always comes in over as well because we're conservative.
That is true.
And it's that conservative nature that then gives us excess at the end of one year that you can roll into the following year.
Such as our real estate um assessment that's currently going on. I I guarantee you, we're on the conservative side.
Yeah.
However, in twenty twenty-one, we did pull seven hundred and sixty-six thousand out. And we just recently made that policy David was referring to at, we look at our June thirty balance.
Agreed.
And we keep that down at thirty percent, move the rest of CIP. But we have to still live off of that thirty percent that starts dwindling down until taxes start rolling in in December. So I think in the past, when we didn't have that thirty percent limit, what you're saying is absolutely right. Like, we don't really have to worry about, I mean, it'd be, you always want to balance the budget, but it's not a big concern because we know we have extra. Now that we moved all that money out, we don't have as big of a pad as we've had in the past.
Right, but we have more than what's, than what we think, than what we're required to have. And we're still talking, like I said, we're still exceeding our pot, we're still going to be exceeding our policy.
Correct.
Right. Yeah.
You're both right. Just clearing things up. Yes.
And the, the cycle that we're in, the cycle that we use, I think is, is, it's a fiscally conservative cycle, but it's also, we don't have to use it or lose it. And that's where you're seeing, we, we typically underspend, which is a good thing. We have a lot of good people in the county that, that cut their budgets through the year. So we had that extra. If we had a use it or lose it policy, yeah, we'd have to, we would have to literally be dollar for dollar right now. Because they're going to blow every dollar. There will be none. But, but when you have it coming back and you, you see it historically, um, I, I think that's why. It's, it's because people are, have encouraged and are are very good stewards with the money in their departments and we're getting that extra back.
But I feel like we're relying on the dump money to bail us out and that can go away tomorrow.
But we're not talking about taking any of that to put it to general funds.
Not yet.
Has anybody suggested that?
I don't, I don't know where we're going yet. We're still talking.
Okay, well, just to be clear, I don't, haven't heard anybody suggest that. I don't.
No, I, I see.
But I mean, that's where it came from before though, correct? From the, the, the dump money was, is supposed to go into the CIP fund.
And has, except for during COVID, when we paused the CIP and then we later did it. So in, in the retro, it did. We were conservative during COVID because we didn't know what was going to happen. I mean, talk about people being worried about the economy, as you said, David. I mean, everyone was worried there. We made better decisions than most of our surrounding counties because we continue to press forward. We've talked about this in in retrospect. And still, all the dump money, if you want, went into CIP. We just did it in December instead of June.
What is all?
I had a proposal out for, I mean, I, I don't think anyone else wants to be until eight o'clock tonight, so I'll just, I'd prefer like if we make a proposal, I'd like to see if we could kind of flip some of them to bed. You know, I have to agree, but I'd like kind of a, I'm, we don't, we don't vote because it's not a.
That's right.
Thing, but um, I mean, I heard a couple sounded like we're in support of reducing the COLA to five percent. Can we get some kind of answers on a couple of these leases we go so we can start figuring out some of the numbers?
What about the um Commonwealth Attorney position? That's kind of.
We already voted in open session to fund that.
So, so these five items right here, they're kind of non-negotiables. This has been funded. The Commonwealth Attorney has gone to full time. He's going to in this current year. Piedmont Regional Jail, we, we have to pay those costs. Uh, Marilyn and Daryl have both said, hey, I can find savings in my budget of these amounts. Um, they came to me and and asked them to find it, but they told me to lower their budget, so that's money going back into our reserves. Um, and then their rescue, they, yeah, rescue squad said that they want to remove twenty-five thousand dollars for their UTV requests. So here's, you know, all of these are guaranteed. Now, if you want to just start here and go down the list.
That would work.
That works. These are all ideas that either I've had or have been suggested to me by other board members. So if we want to talk about the personal property tax, decreasing that, um, you know, we usually tax it the four fifteen rate. And I know when the commissioner had made the presentation about the, the increased values, Sean had made the suggestion of maybe decreasing the rate by thirty percent. So if you decrease it by thirty percent, here's your collection rate. If you only decrease it by twenty-five percent, we can get this much back into our budget. And here's all, here's where all the numbers fall out. So I arbitrarily picked twenty percent, but y'all can tell me what you want to do.
I think the um, I think the governor actually signed something that split cars out. So the trailers and the, and the boats and the jet skis would still be at the normal route.
And that's what this does.
And I think. I'd like to see the twenty. I think we can do twenty safely. And I think that would show the citizens we're trying to, trying to, to help them out. Um, I'm good with the twenty.
I support you on that.
Everyone feel good with the twenty?
I'm still going to fight for thirty.
That's what I was saying. I was gonna go more.
Because they're, I mean, they are increased thirty to forty percent.
Yeah, I mean, right, okay.
Dexter.
Thirty.
So we want to say the thirty?
Leave it at thirty.
If we can make it work.
Yeah, let's, it just gives us something to look at and see what we can do.
So that's.
I mean, they're taking a beating. What scares me is, you know, you have a lot of people that are retired. And they have no other source of income whatsoever. And they can't go out and get a job to help offset this stuff.
I've, I've had a lot of citizen response thinking maybe for the thirty that we haven't even heard.
I did too. I had a lot of people that likes.
Let's go for it. Let's, let's head on for it then.
All right, so we're going to stay at thirty. We're going to bring the COLA down to five. Um.
I just not, just because I said that suggestion, I'm, I know, I'm not clear with the group.
I think we'll just look at the numbers. I mean, just take a hack at it and we'll see what we can do.
Okay, because those are, I mean, that's what we have or.
No, none of these. See, on this sheet, do you see the check to general fund balance at one point?
I'm sorry, I think I misunderstood, Mr. Roberts. You mean assume five percent from a, I'm with you. I understand. I thought.
They're going down. Let everybody, like the thirty, we'll hit the thirty, we'll hit the five and we'll see how, yeah, how far off we are.
Thank you.
Together.
This is just looking at the operating expenses of every department, cutting by five percent, including school transfer. Um, don't know how that would fly, but I did the math.
That's across the board and everywhere.
That's across the board in those we can control. It's not in like the auditor's fees. It's not in Piedmont Regional Jail. It's those that departments can actually control. Uh, brought us one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Apply the same to the schools brings you that. And then here's all of the requests made at the last budget work session by department.
I have a hard time with the flat reductions because, just like, you know, you know, some that can't be changed.
Yes.
Within their, within their departments, they know some that can't be changed too. I think, you know, we already saw at the top of your worksheet where departments who can cut have cut. We've seen departments not ask for increases at all. And so like someone who doesn't ask for an increase to get cut by five percent, and then someone who asks for an increase there to get cut. I just don't think we're talking apples to apples and all of that. Um, and I think we don't know the impact for that. In the schools one, for example, we already saw where they saved, you know, already more than five percent, I think, is in their total. In that, you know, the PowerPoint sheet where they have all their cuts they've done.
You do the math, yes.
You know, so when Sean talked about like incentive, we don't have the use it or lose it because it incents poor spending. If you start doing bottom cuts, and I've seen this from work many times, people start padding their budget. Because they know you're going to cut five percent. We are fortunate to have departments that do not pad their budgets. And come talk to us even when they want to spend another six thousand dollars, which surrounding counties don't get into that low amounts. I think we're going to see a bad future behavior if we do cuts like that. We keep moving. I mean, like, but Tom wanted to just keep moving. I just want to speak to those. But I'm sorry.
We keep moving.
There you go. Turn it into the nitty-gritty's with the, the other departments. This is where it's going to get real. That one, I think you go have to have. Now, I would like to make a point on this. I think. We need to go up on our permit fees.
I agree.
Ten percent is not going to kill us. It'll give us about twenty-two thousand dollars more, more than cover that.
I agree.
I think we're too cheap. But all good with letting him go.
In exchange for the increased fees?
Yeah.
I agree because we had that where Drew Wayne said he was a look at, he was going to look at those. I think that's fair and he seemed, seemed like when we went through them, that was reasonable.
The last page shows you that, at the bottom shows you their total figure.
I agree.
Yeah, I think they've always had a part-time from another.
Look at the new guy.
Does he?
Been free, he's a free man.
That person is going further in his career. Okay, law, I mean.
Are you able to bake it? Do you have, is your spreadsheet, is your. No, spreadsheet, I think I was at end of the table. Uh, is your spreadsheet factor where we could add in that, in that revenue increase too now?
Um.
Could you just go to the, could you just go to the top? Could you just, yeah.
But do we have an estimate of how much?
Todd has it. Todd.
Twenty-two, there it is. Twenty-two, one seventy-seven, fifty-five.
Oh, nice. Twenty-two.
One seventy-seven, fifty-five.
Down to the penny. Look at you. All right.
Be sane in South Carolina. I'm still in Virginia today.
I'm not going to say it today either.
I did.
I know you're saying it. I know you're doing.
Hey, I admit what I'm wrong.
Did it change? It, it was okay.
All right, so Public Works.
Public Works.
And I can show you the details as we go. He's asking to bring a part-time to a full-time.
But that's really not going to take an effect until, I think he said January, whenever the bank comes online.
Yeah, we said, we put it in for January.
So she'd get.
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
How much, how much is part-time?
Currently, we pay about sixty-five hundred.
So two, two new part-times would be two and then one would be full-time.
Yeah, because no benefits.
Yeah.
Health insurance and service. Retirement is a killer.
So the question would be, would part-time be available for that?
Right.
You'd have to, Daryl, that one.
Yeah.
You can find them.
Almost can hire anybody for anything.
Well, that's been the, and I think that's been, not just him, but we've seen this in other, I mean, the sheriff was just talking about his even, you know. It's so hard to find a part-time person because, yeah, they get paid so, you know.
It's hard to find anybody.
Yeah. Um, I, so we're just going.
At the point, you know, till we get into the, the bank building renovation and get that going. I think Daryl's kind of good. He really needed it right then.
True, because that's going to be a year down the road or.
Yeah, that was the extra to, to clean the bank building.
And she did factor it based on the timeline that he said though. There you go. Yeah, it's fine. You can do it the way.
Well, the other people, we keep on going, come back to it.
Well, the other, the other piece that Public Works, um, we had some discussion about was sanitary district fees. So we, the last few years, we've been increasing those because costs keep going up, which only increased it based on false amounts. Um. Daryl said he expects with the new meters, even if you don't change the rate, that you're going to see an increase in revenue. I had a hard time with him so strongly believing that was. I had a hard time with him so strongly believing that was going to be the case, but not being able to put any kind of estimated number in that, you know, even if it was like half a percent increase.
As well as he'll have a decrease in fuel cost and labor.
Because of the meters.
Right.
Yes.
Did that factor down? Do we know if that part's factored in?
I had my revenue.
That's a really good point. Well, but his would be on the expense side, right?
Right, right. I'm just thinking decreased expense that would offset pretty much of this added.
That's true. I can get with him and see if he factored that in, in his budget.
Well, where I was going is if so, then it more, it should more than make up for that other one. If not, I'd go with your saying, your suggestion. If, if the combination of reduced fees, review, excuse me, reduced expenses and increased fees could more than offset that increased need in custodial, I could be comfortable with that. If not, I'll go, I agree with you. Let's, let's wait. So I think what you could do, Carla, for now, since we don't know what he was, his estimate would be, I think you could remove that line. Because if we're saying it'll either be that amount or more, even more positive, then I think that would work in your number calculation. I think in, I heard you say yes or?
Yes.
Okay. I just trying to summarize, but don't want to speak over.
All right. Next is the treasurer's request. And here is her total dollars requested for salaries. And here's the benefits that come along with it for a total of thirty-one thousand.
I kind of lumped all them together. Um, these, these pain greeters are way out of the Baker Tiller study. And if we're holding other employees to that, the sheriff's office is using that. Like the schools even use Baker Tiller to do theirs.
Similar, a similar study, different company, but yeah.
It's kind of hard for us to step that far out.
I agree.
I agree, David. I think, I mean, we spent a lot of money on that tower study. And I, I think we're doing a disservice to our citizens that when everybody said, let's do the study, let's see where we're at, let's go with it and then, and not go with it is a disservice and a waste of money. I, I, I appreciate what they're doing. I mean, I understand that. Sure, a lot of us would like to pay employees more than you can.
Since we already, may add to that, since we already expected to do the constitutional officers up to the Baker Tilly amounts in this current year's budgets and we've, that was baked in, yeah. I would suggest we could do that in retro at the January first to be exact, that way it's exactly the same with all the rest of the county employees. They all work January first also.
Was that the other half of the one fifty last year?
We put seventy-five thousand in our budget this year.
Right, we did.
That's the other half of what we did last year.
It was included in the seventy-five. It was a hundred and fifty if we'd started in the whole year. If I started in January, it was seventy-five. So it's the remaining portion of the seventy-five that didn't go to administration employees.
So we still would not go over budget in current year.
Right.
So that gets on to the mid, to the ranges.
To the exact, to the exact formula used for all other county employees.
Okay. Do we have any figures on it?
I had, yes. I asked Mary Beth for everything she had gone over with these three departments. And it looks like for the treasurer's office, there would be about a two hundred dollar change to one employee, no change to another because they haven't been here for a year. And less than a thousand for the third. So it'd be very little cost to get them up to where everybody else is.
But if we do a five percent C O L, they still get that too, right?
Yes. Yeah. Again, treating them the same as all, treating them the same as all county employees.
This is null and void anyhow on the cost because it's already figured in from last year is what you're basically saying.
Current year.
Current.
This year, it was carried over to this year.
Did you factor it in the carryover though? You'd used current salaries, not?
I don't understand the question.
So when you, for this current year, so you took.
Current, the year we're in. Twenty-two.
Yes. Well, I'll work from that. And you see that one person, for example, is two hundred less. I know in our F Y twenty-two budget, we factored in the additional two hundred dollars.
Yes.
When you're looking at the estimate for F Y twenty-three, did you calculate that person on the, with the two hundred dollars in or without the two hundred dollars?
Without. I did it on current salaries.
Okay. Could be, but it's still, it's still relatively small. I mean.
I mean, honestly, if you're down to a five percent overall, we might still end up saving money.
Yeah.
From, going from.
Oh, it'll definitely be less than that.
Bringing these employees up. Yeah, it's going to be a net savings. It's my prediction. I don't have any numbers for the sheriff's office just yet, which is the biggest one, but I can get those from Mary Beth. So I still don't think it'd be a huge cost.
I think his, I thought his increase, I thought his, um, I don't have his paperwork in front of me. I thought his factored in just doing the Baker Tilly increase amounts.
Might have.
I think he did.
Good. Okay.
I know he didn't ask for more than the Baker Tilly amount.
Right. He did not. Yeah, they had a great plan.
So what does that do to those four lines right there? Is that change?
It would be more like, that's just a guess. It would change it to two thousand-ish.
In one department?
Uh, just for treasure. I'd have to look at each, each individual one. Which I didn't do that.
So, so what was your number before you changed that one though? Do you remember? Approximately.
Thirty-one?
But, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. That's consistent with what I had written down. Okay. Yeah. And then has she come back with her estimate on what to do with the dog tag fees?
Not to me.
No, and that's another thing we need to do too, because animal control is not doing the fines for not getting tags. When you do the two, because you're leaving that on the table.
Do you know what the fine amount is?
I can find out.
Be good to find out because if that's not being charged, why would anybody pay their fee if there's no penalty?
Right. A penalty or enforcement for it.
And as we talked last week, it's a stand, a state mandated fee to pay. So we certainly ought to penalize if you're not paying the state mandated fee.
It actually ends like, only ends up being that amount.
All right. Do you think you can update the overall sheet then with pretty close estimates for those?
Yes. Can do that. I'll keep talking and I'll work on that. Um, so I'll do the same for commissioner and for clerk of the court while you guys talk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So now you're to Holly. No.
Yes.
No. No.
We're not.
Well, wait.
Well, you think I let everybody else talk? That was just my mouth. They all have an opinion too.
So she asked.
You said one word.
Talking about Holly's.
Cause she asked for four different, we talked about four different things for you to come on all of them. So we talked about, um.
I was going to redo the figures for treasurer, commissioner and clerk of the circuit court. While y'all talk about community development.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd moved on to Holly's office.
Is that what you want? You did?
Yeah, go ahead.
For some, okay.
I just wanted to clear what you were saying no to, because we're four different discussions for Holly's. So like, don't increase the fees for zoning, for example? Is that what you meant? Cause that was one.
She was asking for an employee.
Well, she had, there were four things.
Yeah.
So.
But the big one to me was the employee.
I'm in favor of the code, code compliance position. I think if, I think that's part of the point of government is to make sure that laws that we, we put out there are enforced. And we are seeing a lot of instances where they're not being enforced. And, um, I don't think we should keep laws in the books if we're not planning to enforce them.
Do we still?
Many of them generate fees as well. And it's not fair to the citizens who abide by the laws for you not to penalize anyone else who doesn't. And it doesn't always mean financial penalty, but just making, making them comply.
But doesn't.
I think if we get our fees straight, that would, that would, that would help fund it, but also we, I think we ought to get our fees straight first. And she said this position wouldn't be needed till
Yeah.
after January.
Yeah, because she's got factored that in. And she offered fee, she offered fee increases, if you remember, so.
Yeah, we could do zoning fees.
Zoning, uh, and delaying zoning. Do we, has, did she come back with estimates on those?
I haven't seen any updates to fees.
With your sheet? Are you, are you with your sheet of fees? Are you able to make some rough estimates?
The zoning fee, from what she told me, she was doing, uh, like ten a week. So if you charge thirty bucks, I think she said that's three hundred dollars a week times twelve.
At fifty-two, you said three hundred a week?
Yeah, that's what she told.
That's fifty-two.
Let's see, she's got eighteen total. To me, it's a little light because she said she's doing averaging three a week now this year. So this is all last year's data.
Yeah. I think it looks to me like you could safely put in another ten, ten thousand on the increase there. I think that would probably be less, but.
I, I like to see us working the team and maybe push this back. Actually, I think it was, well, let's plant a seed right now, but what I like to see.
I just don't like the message we're sending to citizens who abide by the laws that we don't enough people to enforce them. If you do good, great on you. Don't, we don't bother with you.
Yeah.
That, and I think, you know, we saw, let's, I really hate to bring this up, but we saw all the uproar last fall about Rogers zoning issue. And as the county said, the reason is they have no one to proactively look at any of those things. And at the time that it was brought forward reactively by someone, we still didn't have resources to go do it. We had to pull resources from other places. Like citizens were pretty clear. They want to see things enforced. That, you know, that includes part of Holly's thing was that includes solar farms, you know, we're approving things that we then don't have the ability to enforce that they protect the citizens either. I'd very happily get on board with her suggestion of having the position start in January.
She sent me a text. She said she wants a deferral fee of two hundred dollars for zoning. And a zoning fee at twenty-five. So she said figure ten grand.
Okay.
So that gives us a good number there. She ought to know.
Why? It's also the same number I projected, so good.
So ten grand.
Well, so with the building, with the building amount, the, the fee side of the building one was six thousand something. So you've got another fourteen thousand excess there plus ten. You know, you're going to come in already covering about a third of that code compliance full year salary. Much less the fact that we're, the request was to have it start in January. And she can't start it in July anyway, because like you said, the hiring is so, so rough. I mean, there's no point. There's definitely no point in budgeting it there. So do you think we could compromise with the half year?
Half around it.
So to start it in January would just be twenty-eight thousand.
Which is almost covered by the other amounts of the fees.
Yeah, but that one building fees will come out of Jerry Wayne's.
Well, I said, I reduced the six thousand out of, I took the six thousand out.
Right.
And only used the, that's right. It's good, and then only used the additional, I said fourteen, actually if you do the math, it's like fifteen thousand, but yeah, I took the six thousand out. She also added in, she also requested increases for planning commission meeting fees. As we talked about, there's only three committees total that receive fees. I'm not in favor of increasing the, the fees. In fact, I'd go further and say,
Why do we have them?
Why do we have them? Period. Yes. Someone, you were going to look Taylor to see which ones were state mandated, remember?
I thought the planning commission is, I guess.
That they just have to have some kind of fee. You know, I'd go further and say another cut we could make is, um, not, in addition to the not increasing the planning commission fee, we could cut, um, our salaries as well. We only get a thousand a month anyway. It's kind of a nominal token figure. I think if you cut the, um, board supervisor's salaries out, that'd be awfully good sign to send citizens.
I would, uh, suggest, Mr. Easter, you donate all yours back like Mr. Gleason's done, even though it took a dime.
I already do, however, that does count, that does cost the county still. County still, even if we donate it all, still has to pay all the social security and, um, FICA taxes for the person.
Which is like, what, roughly two thousand a person?
Yes.
Maybe eighteen hundred.
Yes.
Mr. Gleason, for when he is, he didn't take a check and turn it back in. He just, we never gave him a good two or anything. He said, I don't want it.
He suggested, he suggested I donate it. So my scenario, my scenario is exact, is exactly accurate. Yes. That's fine. I make, it's just a suggestion that we make cuts to ourselves. If no one else is on board with that, it's just a suggestion.
What did your figures come up for there, Laura? I'm trying. You're going to slap me. Slap me. I got it. Looking at. Carla, what did your figures come up on the Baker Tiller study?
All right. We're looking at twenty thousand for the clerk, because there was actually two significant increases that
Yeah.
two deputies. They actually really were underpaid.
Yeah.
Um, so you're looking at twenty-one thousand there. You're looking at just eleven hundred for the treasurer. The commissioner, I have a star next to because it was not only the salary increase, but it was the request for fifteen thousand dollars to overlap some time to replace a retiring employee. So are, are you looking at giving that as well?
I think the overlapping was probably necessary to keep the functioning of the organization. I mean, I, I found that extremely reasonable.
Okay. So if we include that, then we're at nineteen thousand for the commissioner.
Kind of base some change to the retirement payout as well, because the salary that's calculated off of may be different.
True. It'll be small.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Every penny is a.
Yeah. So this won't be exact, but once I get into it, it'll be close. All right. Now sheriff is the most complicated one, um, because it's the highest number of people we're talking about. So they had twenty-nine thousand in merit increases and hiring three full-time deputies to replace five part-time deputies. The, I want to say one of the new full-time deputies would require a car. The other two are part-time deputies that already have cars. So one, no, I said that wrong.
It's two.
Three would require cars. One would require firearms and one would require.
Yeah. And that's where the big, but.
This is the big cost. It didn't actually cost as much as I thought it would, when I heard it.
Well, it's going, the conversion of the salary portions kind of is close to paying for itself. It's the additional full, yes, the car, et cetera.
Yes.
I mean, I, I was going to wonder if we could go with converting to two full-time, you know, and that would cut out one, that would cut out one of the cars and all the firearms and uniforms.
So I set this up just so I wanted to do one or two. All right. So.
And you would take, I think firearms and uniforms come out completely if I, right?
So now we're just looking at twenty-two thousand as opposed to, what was it? Two hundred and twenty thousand? That's huge. Yep. So everybody.
A huge expense of that is the vehicles, so.
Yeah.
That's, the vehicle and equipment.
Yeah.
Almost a hundred grand right there.
I think to increase two full times in a year, I mean, it's not, it's not like he had the part times anyway, like he's saying, most of them that weren't being able to fill, so it's a pretty, that'd still be a good increase on the roads.
Now, I kinda wish they were here to answer this. Hey, Robin, I didn't see you popping. Um, I'm wondering, because they needed three to replace five, if we have two, would we just be replacing four? Do I need to change that math, right? Because.
Well, I think he says, he wasn't able to fill the, the part timers, period. I think we just need to let those go.
Okay, so I'll leave it at ninety two.
And a couple, I don't speak for, but I think at least two of those part times was that additional court requirement, and that's what they've been having trouble filling, so.
Let's leave it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we've covered all of those requests, and here's where we are. Eight ninety eight. So we just need to come to a conclusion.
Did you go down to the bottom, I'm sorry, can you go down to the bottom for a second? So you put the three seventy five?
That's gonna add to CIP revenue.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought it should do, okay.
Is there any way we can look at the the two and a half or the five percent? I'd really like to get that number down, so. It'd be nice to know what our carryover is gonna be. Do we have any?
Want to allow the carryover?
I'm, I'm saying how much we're under budget this year, probably eat that number up.
I agree with you, I'm just saying that's their point. They don't wanna allow carryover, though, because they wanna just put that back and let it sit in the bank somewhere.
Yeah, that's not being fiscally responsible.
I agree with you.
We also don't wanna balance the budget on carryover funds. That's also not being fiscally.
What would you continue to do? I mean, we just keep setting them in the bank, though.
Well, recently, we've said, instead of letting them sit in the bank, we'll move them to CIP and spend them on projects for the county.
Well, that's, yeah.
Right, but that also, that's also a disincentive to the, the staff as well, keep in mind, so if they underspend, then that money goes over to CIP, and then we have to reduce their budgets to match for the next year, because we just keep taking away. So you're taking away anything they underspend and moving it to CIP, which makes it harder and harder to balance every year.
But who, who takes it away because they underspend? The way we operate now is they tell us what they need in their budget and we fund it.
Right, and at the end of the year, whatever they haven't spent, they just don't get.
Right.
Right, otherwise they're incented to go spend it.
Correct.
And then we would not have it to go to CIP.
I, I don't, I don't. Go get it.
We do.
It's a carryover.
We allow that on a year to year, a year, year to basis, for the same, for the same reason.
Yeah.
Because if we don't allow them to carry it over, then it encourages wasteful spending just to get money spent on something by the end of the year. They and the departments are really good about that. But if you take whatever doesn't, these departments don't spend from your general budget, and you keep taking what the excess of that and only moving to CIP instead of moving to general funds, how are they incented to not spend it?
So what, what it is and what, what it looks like is it looks like you're charging your citizens for money you don't need.
Right.
Because if, if you're telling your citizens, we gotta charge and tax you for, let's just say five million dollars, but yet you make five point two million off of them, but you don't use that point two, you put it in the bank, you overcharge your citizens, that's.
Well, then give them a tax return, I mean, give them a credit then, a tax credit, lower the rate. Right now, we're still taking it, we're taking the CIP money that's sitting in the bank, or we're taking the CIP money and using it against the, the budget, or any of the reserves, we're using it there.
You could.
All we're trying to do is balance the budget to where we're zero cost, we're not taking money from anywhere. We're almost zero, I'm not saying we can get to zero, but as close as we can, and then if we have money left over, then give it back to the citizens, that's what it's about. I mean, we'll go give them twenty percent or thirty percent of whatever it is for the tax, we should give them anything back that we don't have, or unless we go put it back into the county.
Right.
I mean, the obvious thing is coming up next, that's, that's the next topic right there.
Put it back into the county.
Yeah, I mean, it's their money, it's not our money.
But I'm saying, don't put it in the bank, put it back into the county.
Which, it needs to go back to the county.
And the budget does do that.
Right.
It's going directly into services provided to them.
Can be, and might not be. I mean, that's why we're trying to tighten it up.
I've talked. I've talked to the amount.
I've talked to a lot of the, the departments and asked them about five percent, and they said they'd never feel it, never miss it. Even some of them that have already cut, that have already sent in a tight budget. You know, like Daryl sent in some stuff and he's cut and he's, he's wouldn't never feel it.
And that's because, I can speak to Daryl's budget, nine times out of ten, he does have padding and maintenance and repairs, say. That's because anything that happens in any building, it's his department that fixes it.
You can't foresee that, I mean.
Office, they have to budget as if they're gonna have a ton of TDOs, they might not. But they'd rather budget it than come to you and ask, but, um, I mean, there is padding in.
And their incentive, their incentive, their incentive to pad fu- future will be great. Cause if we say we're gonna, if we start a pattern of just taking five percent off, their incentive to pad will go up dramatically. Right now, they're padding on, padding on a very realistic amount, that sometimes they do need.
I don't agree with that. I think, I think the department heads are phys- physically responsible, and they see what we're trying to do. I, I don't.
I said it would be an incentive to them, not that they would, I said it'd be an incentive.
I don't, I don't worry about physical, I mean, wasting money. I think all the department heads do a good job. And if they, most of them said that five percent wouldn't, wouldn't kill them. Think it's a good place to.
I mean, that was my question, if we cut the budget across the board, five percent, would it hurt you? And a lot of them asked me, would it hurt you personally if you did it? And I mean, the answer is pretty much not. You'd never miss five percent. Don't go to Starbucks, or don't go out to eat a couple days a week. You'd forget about it in a couple weeks.
Well, but you talked about the same, you know, use the alternative with retirees. Some people who have plenty of money, five percent isn't gonna hurt you. If you are living tight, if you're already fiscally managing your budget well, then five percent will hurt you. Like in your retiree example.
Yeah, it would, but I mean, I've talked to a lot of them.
Are you counting the officers in your fa- in your factoring? So when you did five percent?
Yes.
So they come in and, and have to beg us for more than five percent, and then we cut them more than five percent.
But you're talking personnel costs, and this is just talking non-personnel costs.
Yeah, I thought you said cross, okay, so that's not.
Across the board, not pay. This is operational cost. This was all the departments across the board, from A to Z.
Non-personnel.
But it's non-personnel, it's somewhere in there, I think, yeah. But it's, it's, it's not cutting anybody's pay. We're just cutting cost, trying to trim the fat, if we have any.
And to your point of every year, I mean, we do budget conservatively, and every year, we typically bring in more revenue than we budgeted and spend less than we budgeted. I think most departments can probably look back at the prior couple years and say, I, I asked for this, but I only spent this. I could probably cut my office supplies. I usually turn back in five hundred dollars. And I would hope they wouldn't say, but next year, I'm gonna blow that on eighteen cases of paper to sit around, because it's use it or lose it. I don't, I don't think they would do.
I don't think they would, I don't.
I know, I would never think that way.
Did the squad, did the squad's budget change any today?
Aside from the twenty five thousand dollars coming out for the UTV, no.
Okay.
The five percent doesn't apply to them?
Uh, well.
Cause it's non-personnel.
Um, yeah, it actually isn't.
And it would apply to the fire department?
Yes.
Did you already, so one of the, the fire department asked to increase their budget by fifty thousand a year. If that, I didn't see that in your items for us to look at. Did you factor it on their increased fifty, or?
That was already in the original presented budget, because that's what he had.
That was that done with the cutoff date. These other ones were added on after the cutoff date.
Well, we still have decisions to make on that, I just wanna be clear, so, so we're agreeing to give them an extra fifty thousand.
It was forty. It was, it was fifty extra on the truck, and it was forty in the operation.
So an extra ninety.
Yes.
So an extra ninety thou, so we're gonna give them an extra ninety thousand and then cut them five percent. Just make sure we understand the numbers we're done.
I was, I was gonna hold firm to the, to the five hundred thousand for the truck coming out of the CIP. And then I was, I was with the twenty thousand. They currently get eighty thousand dollars for the operating.
Right, go to a hundred.
Go to a hundred, and that's basically a.
I agree with that.
That's basically a cut, so that's what I was.
And then you still cut the five percent on top, though. Cause that, you said it's in all departments.
We could probably do that.
I agree with you on the truck and the.
Wouldn't, wouldn't change service in it.
Okay, so we'd add back in.
So the fifty thousand that he's saying to go back to five hundred thousand, that's not gonna help our, what we take from reserves. It will help our bottom line budget. But because we're taking it from the CIP, but you are talking about the fire department local help contribution.
Said they wanted to go from eighty to one twenty.
We're gonna.
Take it to a hundred, so adds back in.
Twenty thousand, okay.
Oh, that went down, that.
It went down.
I don't. Can you just click on the formula on the, the B thirty two? Okay, yeah.
So everyone's in agreement with this, the twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the, on the discount for the, the personal property? You think we could limit it to, you wanna limit it to two vehicles per household? I mean, that's that would cover a lot of the elderly people and that are on a fixed income income. Would that make a difference?
It's a lot more work for Laura.
Well, one thing to keep in mind on this one, um, this is a temporary increase. So if you use this increase as part of your, your, um, flowing budget, um, it's gonna leave a deficit next year or the year after when these prices come back down to reality. That's something to keep in mind, too. So if you're using that for part of your salaries per se, the salary target will come down, so just, I mean, just something to think about. That's where I was thinking, if, if you never have it, you won't miss it. But when, when the prices come back down, that'll automatically drop, and the only way you could counter it is to raise personal property rate. And a thirty percent raise on personal property rate, um, nobody would be very happy with that, or twenty, or.
You're not worried, the highest around anyhow.
Y- yeah, it's already, yeah, pretty.
Yeah.
Stiff.
Yeah, the last meter was lower, last change meter was to lower it.
Yes, we, yes, we did have it.
We need to find other new revenue sources.
Economic development.
Oh, for just sixty thousand.
So one thing.
For just sixty thousand a minute ago, we weren't willing to cut our own budget.
We haven't discussed, but it is in the original presented budget. Um, CRC that was mentioning a full-time regional economic developer, they wanted each county can, to contribute fifty thousand dollars. Um, Taylor gave his input and thought fifty thousand dollars from each county, that's, is this gonna be that successful? Um, it seemed a little high, but we, and we also didn't know if they would meet the timeframe. We did put in twenty five thousand dollars. We can easily take that out, or you can contribute the full fifty. Um, I don't really have an update on where they are with that position.
Very expensive economic.
Yes, that's what we said. It seemed a little unreal.
That historically CRC isn't giving us value.
Right, that's what troubles me, is we're not seeing much value out of that.
Yep.
That's what bothers me. I think we'd be paying for somebody else's.
Yes.
Workhorse.
I kind of agree. And that would save us twenty five thousand plus benefits out of our budget, if you'd like to remove that.
It's in there now?
It's currently in there.
Bye.
Right, good deal. That'll give us about, I'll estimate twenty eight thousand. No. Well, we're, we're not paying their benefits. I think it was a flat twenty five thousand. We would just write them, write the check to CRC.
Well, speaking of economic developer, I'm not in favor of that one, so I'm glad to reduce, remove that, but, um, but, um, I do think it's concerning that we eliminated the, the economic developer position for Amelia.
No, that's up here.
Oh, okay.
They just happened to both be twenty five thousand.
Gotcha.
Uh, we eliminated the position for economic developer for Amelia. We eliminated IT position, even though we continue to hear about all the challenges we have with IT. And we eliminated the board clerk position when we continue to not be able to keep our uh, documents organized and on time and our website up to date. So I think those are challenging, that we continue to cut things that we already need. I'll just leave it at that, cause I know there won't be support for it.
And that was done, I'll speak for myself, that was done because I'm just budgeting for currently funded positions. If y'all choose to add those in.
They were funded.
Add as a extra.
They were funded, they weren't filled.
Correct.
Right.
So that's extra money sitting there from last year.
This year's. That's will be a lot of return of money this year, from those three positions.
That will go straight to CIP, because, and so that, that's, but, but look, that's exactly my example. You cut, instead of it coming back into your regular budget, you reduce the amount available for your regular budget every year you keep doing that. Cause every amount not spent, you're going to take out of regular budget and you're putting into CIP every time. When we already have ten million in CIP.
Well, not every amount not spent. If you end the year at June thirtieth with above thirty percent, some years, we might not.
Okay, anything above thirty percent.
But it's not, yeah, okay.
Will continue, will continue to pull down on the regular budget. You will get into a pattern where you will start, you will continually be doing that every single year, that you're over thirty percent. So as long as we remain conservative with our budgets, which we historically are, we will pull money out of the, of next year's budget every time, cause you'll keep reducing and reducing the funds available.
Well, if you have a bunch of money left over, then give it back to the citizens as a tax break.
And rather than looking.
Instead of putting it into the CIP.
You could.
Give it back.
It would be a tax break if you pulled it back into your regular and didn't have to increase taxes in the future. If you keep doing it every year, in order to, to break even, you will at some point have to increase taxes.
Cause expenses.
But if you keep pulling it back, you allow it to come back. As you said, you can't guarantee that. You said earlier, you can't guarantee that inflation always goes up.
I was talking about.
But it's true in anything. You said that about, um, expenses, too.
You'll have, you'll have some years where real estate value drops a little bit.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think with the reassessment currently in progress, something's gonna be happy done next year anyway.
Yeah, keep in mind, we have to remain at a zero increase. So when you say something has to be done, it will be no change to the budget unless you agree to increase taxes. Cause the re, the law requires us to change, to lower our, if the values go up, law requires us to lower the rate to make it equal, not equalization.
That year.
Correct, you, you bring the tax rate down.
Correct, yeah. And if it, so you will not be increasing taxes, therefore you will have no extra revenue next year because of that.
And that's what Amelia's been doing for thirty years.
That's the law.
But not, we're not ever raising it back up.
Exactly, which is why we have some of the lowest real estate.
We were at like sixty seven cent and like eighty six, and we're at fifty one today, but yet. We were at like sixty-seven cent and like eighty-six, and we're at fifty-one today, but yet cost are five times what they were in nineteen eighty-six.
But growth comes into play. Every house we have, we're, we're getting more revenue.
But every house
Everything's a maybe.
Every house increases the cost.
It costs you a dollar and thirty cent for every house.
Yeah.
Tax money.
Residential growth always costs you more than it brings in.
Business only costs you about twenty-five cents.
That's what I'm saying. You still got business and all that that can come in. We just gotta get
And we're on
We need to get busy on that.
But we just cut the, we cut the possible position for that too.
Well, we haven't cut it. It's up to you guys. Do you wanna fund it?
It's there yet.
And put it in.
It is, it's already cut.
Oh, it's cut?
It has, she's
I didn't include
In her, in her first document for the year, she said she took those out. They've been cut the whole time.
I only funded currently filled positions. I don't see the point in continuing to fund a position that we don't. I will say needs, but
Do we have any estimate on what the, the tax yields will go up? Do we have that?
From the new reassessor? I do not have that. Our commissioner might have that, but I haven't received it.
But, but that won't affect
They can't, they can't go up. If the reassessment because of that, then we'd have to be backed down equal, equalized. They can't, that can't bring in more revenue by law. It's not allowed.
The first year, yeah.
Well, that, but that's the only time the reassessment matters.
Yeah, but then they have
Don't do reassessment in future years. You only do it every five, right? So it's a move, it's reassessment only applies that year. Any other year is not, has nothing to do with reassessment. It's normal growth. Normal growth is already factored in. Charity has an estimate for that.
You'd have to raise the rate the following year to
Exactly.
Lost game.
Mm-hmm. And keep cutting. I'm just saying, we're giving the citizens a really false impression here. Because we're making it worse and worse, to the point you will have no choice but to raise taxes in the future.
I don't understand how it's getting worse and worse.
I don't, I don't
I'm actually not gonna even try to explain it again, because I don't think it's any point. So where do you wanna go next?
Why don't we look at the Catherine Pries? Let this sink in a little bit. Let's look at the Catherine Pries.
Um, another, another cost that, that needs to be talked about on this too is the rescue squad. Their, their budget's tripled in four years. I mean, that's, that's a huge cost to the taxpayers. They, they went from two hundred and twenty, uh, two hundred fifty-six thousand, actually two fifty-nine in twenty nineteen, to seven forty-five nine hundred per pair this year. I don't think there's any other budget on there that has increased that much.
I will say, um, Kim Smith popped in today and did point out just before this meeting. So we're comparing, when you're looking at FY twenty-two, that's the original adopted budget. But if you remember, they came to the board for supplemental appropriations for sixteen thousand for their personal property payment, which we gave them only to give back to the county. And then a hundred thousand dollars because their cost for their crew had increased. So really
And the tax is twenty-nine thousand, I think this coming year is what they estimate, cause the new trucks.
Right.
So it's pass through.
But I mean, it's still a huge increase.
Large expense
Yes.
Citizens that
It is.
It's the, the biggest jump.
How do we avoid it?
That's kind of a service we've gotta have.
I don't know how you can avoid it though.
Right now
I don't know either. Their volunteer base keeps going down, which requires
No, but this, this is more to the point of, of your, your, your low tax rate. This keeps going up. Tax rate stays down here. Something's gotta be cut.
I didn't say tax rate was to stay low forever. I don't know what's gonna happen in the future.
No, that's, uh, but I mean, I'm just saying, here's a historic, here's a tripling of, of one department in four years.
Okay. You want the CIP?
Yes, looking to CIP. You know, he is great. Um, I'm going, I was involved in it on the, on the commission, and I agreed with the, the high priority stuff. We know the fire trucks coming will be a washout of it. And I think that's something that the, the citizens will see. Do water inflow into the I and I study? I think that would cause us some creative longevity in our current system.
Yeah.
All of that.
So is a question you're asking, the highs, what's, the highs are already what's in the baked into the budget, right? Are you asking, do we disagree with any of the highs that, did you tell me?
Yes.
I don't.
Um, That's taking care of quite a few things at the school, and it's kind of spread, spread over. The gym bleachers. I need to, it's hard, it's hard for me to walk up on
Pres, we hadn't been sued.
I regularly pick on it as a radio system, and Sean, have I been involved in that and I could sit down and howl. I think it is gonna affect the system. It's gonna affect the deputies' safety. It's gonna affect them getting there, communications. The schools involved in that, it's gone across the board. Y'all have any other concerns with the CIPs?
Are you talking only to highs still?
No, do we agree on the high stuff?
I don't agree they're the only high, but I'm fine moving forward with all those, yeah.
Okay. Um,
So you're saying yes to all the highs?
I'm saying I agree with him on all the highs. Yeah. Do you, I mean, what's your thought?
Done good.
What do you have to say?
I think we need to, I mean, to the point earlier, we have a lot of CIP money, um, I don't know why we're stopping at the highs.
We're not, we're just getting started, right? We're going to the mediums now, right?
And yeah.
Yeah.
Right, that's what you asked me.
Yeah.
Okay. Don't trample on me, cause you answered your question. Alright, well, since you've asked me on those, I'm not in favor of the number three superior way extension. Um, I don't think we should put fund, we should fund into the EDA more when they're not proactively bringing more in. They only react to, um, what's brought to them. It's the only medium that I have a concern about. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm not sure what we would benefit from that.
The bathrooms, they gotta be done, correct?
Well, I mean
I think at some point, they, some point they do.
Yeah. I mean
And as we, eh, we've talked about before, planning for something before, she's spending the money turns, tends to be a good expenditure. So break, I like how they broke that up.
I'm not, I think that animal control can probably, I don't see that as a, even a medium.
I think what we needed to go by is what Daryl recommended on that.
Daryl has some recommendations, additions to the current building and fixing the issues in the building versus buying land and building a whole new one.
Oh, yeah.
I think
So he would still need money for his portion.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we're there yet. I, I think it's still, I think I'm talking to him, that can be an in-house planning, design, deal.
He said he could handle all that.
So
So I mean, we could
I mean, this just bumps it out another year, like we're making no progress.
I mean, yeah, the, the animal control
So we had, we paid, the board paid for a study of what to do.
That was
And now
Two million dollars to build it, to build it.
Well, we don't have, we're not asking to fund two million dollars. The, we're asking to fund a design, right?
Phase one.
Yeah.
Of the building.
We can say two million dollars is unacceptable.
Okay.
In fact, I think we have said that, last board said that, and I think we also that individually too.
I mean, I'd love to know how much the renovation would cost Daryl's way and just fund it. There, there's no doubt they do need
Yeah.
Renovation.
Budgeting for some, well, you and I were talking about this a while ago. Budgeting for something doesn't mean you give them carte blanche to spend it. You just say, this is how much we think we're gonna need for. You know, if you don't ever start putting in into the CIP budgeting, you, you're just never gonna, never making the progress to get anywhere.
Well, we need to get Daryl involved in that then, to find out what those figures are.
Why was he not involved before, Taylor? Cause you're, I mean, they're both your departments.
The animal control for Daryl, he's got some thoughts, but it wasn't, he wasn't part of the feasibility study or whatever it was for the new one. That was a complete brand new duo.
But Brian was. I mean, it's still both your department. Both, they're still both your department.
They participated in that, but the instructions were, we're going to, we're not gonna, we're not gonna patch, we're not gonna fix, we're going to. So that was really, yeah, Ryan could give him his input as to what was necessary, the areas that he needed, what he was looking for.
So that'll be the second, but that's the second project on here, cause we've got the same concern with Hindle, that county funded and did something, but didn't involve all the right people. And so now we need to go back and plan again. Like we, they're wasting a lot of money if that's the case. Cause the funding for those came out of CIP. And I know why Daryl wasn't. I mean, to be, Daryl said he has no time to be able to do it, because his budget is super tight. We understand that.
Do we wanna set that figure there? And Daryl has to hire an architect to draw something? At least start on it. I think the construction could be done now.
I mean, the amount of money would go a good ways towards a renovation project.
What are we renovating? The existing building?
Yeah.
I mean, he said you gotta, yeah, he said you gotta tear the floor out and all that.
He's got ideas of, uh, addition going on with proper floors for the animals, brand new area for the animals. You know, use what he's got basically for storage and supplies and spillover stuff. But you cannot put an animal in a building that's built like this one floor-wise, because the paint just doesn't stay. It belongs to other things. Ventilation's not right. But he does, he, uh, he does have ideas as to what we could do.
But that literally means the county wasted the money on the study, because the study also evaluated cost efficiency of replacing versus new. I mean, we went through all of this already. You heard, I mean, you were there for the study results too.
I'm out on this one. I went there, so I don't know, I don't know what to tell you.
The part that got me in animal shelters, they built a new one, they would use the old one for storage. I think we've got enough storage.
And then you gotta buy a piece of land.
If we can renovate this one
Well, they only had a little corner. They were, it's just, they're not moving. It was just a corner of the lot next door.
I'm fine with doing a, a renovation, letting Daryl hit that up. If we've gotta put that in there to start the process, I'm fine with that.
But do we have to do this now? I mean, are they running us out of what's there? Or I thought it was a, a way down the road thing.
We still get good reviews and good reports, but we know that the thing is not gonna last forever. It's got its issues and it would that's a, a building would benefit from some upgrades or renovation or replacement, so.
They are over capacity sometimes. I do hear about that, so.
I think it could be debated whether the reports we get from the state are good or just fair, but
So, alright, well, I say let's, let's put a check about that and we'll think about it and let's see what else you got. So that's animal control, number six. Alright, so what else you wanna look at for medium? What'd you, what'd you decide about bathrooms in the high school?
What are you asking?
Everybody, I mean
What'd you decide?
I mean, if it needs to be done, it needs to be done.
Well, it was a, uh, estimated two million dollar price tag, so if you, if you wanna waste the, we shouldn't waste the money on this unless we say we're gonna pay for it when they do it.
Alright.
Okay, well, I just seen two oh five. So that's just the planning, the planning was the two oh five part. What's the planning get us?
I think we should not pay for any planning for anything going forward. We're not trusting the results of the plans.
Right.
We should eliminate all planning in the future. We have a lit, we have nixed that every time we went through discussion today.
We either need to fund something or not fund it.
Yep. Planning is a waste of money for us. Planning gets you good design, what an actual price will be instead of a ballpark. And then you can move forward, or you can just keep ignoring it. That's what it gets you.
We really haven't got an accurate price. I mean, even the handle building is a, is about a, I don't feel like it's an accurate price. I think it's a good starting point, but I don't think it's the end price of it.
I think the school's had a price.
Well, theirs was not a building estimate. Theirs was a feasibility study.
Yeah.
Today, the school's got a price in their engineering study life.
They already done too. I guess. Two million for a bathroom?
Well, not any bathrooms, it's all bathrooms.
This is, yeah.
Yeah. All of them in all the schools?
Uh, middle
It'll go in high school. Yeah.
Alright, so
I mean, just, I just wanted you to know, it's a bigger picture there than what you're
It's in the, it's in the CIP number. It's already in the CIP submissions just for future years.
Yes.
This, all we're looking at here on this sheet is twenty twenty-three.
Yes. I think those are on the, they were in here under the tab, CIP tab.
Yeah, I think so too.
So what's the consensus?
Now, the wall replacement at the high school, that's up on the roof. That's the only thing I could figure, right? The metal wall replacement? They're talking about it on the roof?
We've got a whole page of description to, for each item. Was it there?
Yeah, high school metal wall replacement. I think it was for the roof, I think. I think there's a bunch of panels missing up there where it blocks the AC units and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
That's the only thing I could think of.
Metal
Yeah.
Half upper.
Yeah, that's the only wall I could think of, and they were talking about replacing metal wall.
Exterior?
Yeah.
Move that up, I'm fine with that. It's an exterior wall we need to protect with.
Right, yeah, that's a, yeah.
Well, same thing. You've got the exterior, the elementary school is number ten. You can see, I mean, you can walk up to that school and see it needs that.
I'm, I'm full exterior stuff, cause we got
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
Cost you more later.
Exactly. Look at Downsbell.
Alright, well, on that same theme, on that same theme, you've got courthouse windows, number two.
I'm not sure that one will be handled when they did the renovation.
Yeah, the rehab. That's what I was wondering.
Indeed. Current work office.
What did their sheet say then? I thought it did not.
I don't have it. But, yeah, we, I'm, I'm fine with
I mean, Daryl submitted it. We have detailed write-ups on all these, our board packets. I'll try to open it back up. But Daryl wouldn't have submitted it double.
Paul, are you kinda adding those figures up so we know how much we will take out of the CIP on these projects?
I will.
All right, well, back to, we need to keep in mind, like I said, if we're gonna fund two point eight million dollars in this radio system, we're gonna fund another two point eight million dollars next year. Unless, I don't wanna go with my route of getting more things done now, that's, that's gonna be six, six and a half million dollars wiped out of your ten. So now you're down to barely being able to do any projects. Depending on revenue sources coming for the next year. Because you can't pay for half of the radio system.
Yeah, we've got to fund the other half next year. Which I think we can.
Those RFPs should be back soon. We should have a pretty solid price. But that's a good estimate that's on there.
So it looks like I got on my checklist. One, two, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and then fifteen.
Yeah, we haven't discussed number four, Hendel.
I don't wanna see it torn down. I would like to do something with it, but I'm not quite to the point of pulling the trigger on it because we don't know the end. I like everything that feasibility study did. I like the idea and concept of the community center, the meeting rooms. I just would like to see the folks to actually go drive the nails and build it, give us a price on it. We can go, I mean, just let the committee submit.
So what, what if we change it to the thirty, three hundred thousand that they asked for, for the, for the next phase then, instead of that one point three?
I tell you, I don't like a glass elevator outside.
Yeah, I think.
That's something. They can change that anytime. That was only a conceptual, they can change that.
Cause I don't think that's gonna benefit us for the few tax credits you could get for doing that. Cause you have to sell them, and I don't think it's the forty cent on the dollar anymore.
Did you add those up, Carl?
Yes, we are at four million, seven forty-four, six hundred.
Right, and then put another three on it again for the next year.
Three hundred thousand?
Yeah, no, three million. So that's seven something, yeah. And we'll continue to get some, some landfill money. I just don't know how long this could continue.
Right, so.
On the rate.
We kind of moved on though. So we in agreement with the three hundred thousand for design on the handle?
Where is that going?
To design.
To get an actual design, so you'd have a specific price for future, and you can weigh in on glass elevator, et cetera, with that.
So you don't wanna try a design build, have somebody?
I think we are, but this will be sitting there in case there's a cost with that.
Okay.
I think still go to design build route with the handle building's committed, uh, recommendations. Let's get to the end game price on it. And phase some type of way.
Looks like the windows are not, just, looks like the windows were not part of the general renovation. They were pulled separate, so.
So that's the consensus on the handle building, three hundred thousand dollars.
Does that put us somewhere around five?
Yep. Five million, forty-four thousand, six hundred.
Without the windows.
That does include the windows.
It does include the windows, okay.
So put us at eight for the next two years.
Minute.
And if you, if you commit to the schools to do theirs, you're committing another two, so that puts us at ten for the next two years. So that wipes out everything we got. The NCP and then whatever, of course, we'll get hopefully three million, two and a half, three million dollars a year back, but.
And if you look at where we are current year, we funded a lot and are not spending it. So that happens year after year.
Right, plus yet one. Now that we're updating theirs, that, that's plus two.
All right, Hendel, we're doing three hundred.
So, so if we're gonna fund the schools, we might as well allocate the two million to support the bathroom renovation. Cause there's no need to fund this project without saying we're gonna pay for that. So we need to add that on. I mean, it would be, that's the thing where we get hung up on years. The years don't matter. We can fund it tomorrow. We have the money. There's no need to say we're gonna fund it next year.
Because the one we're bidding right now for the, the last firehouse paving, I mean, that was committed two years. When you go budget wise, two years ago, yeah, we're always ahead.
I do think some of these studies, I, I, I feel, I feel bad as a citizen that we're not getting any value out of them. We're doing these things and not adhering to them, so. I, I mean, if, if I'm gonna, for me, I'm not gonna approve the schools to get that money unless I approve them to do the project. Cause one can't go without the other, and if you wait a couple of years, this isn't gonna be good, and you'll have to do it again anyway. I'm okay with funding the whole project. I just think everybody needs to be clear on that.
I think maybe we should, for that reason, we should consider assigning a board member to each project. Because if we're gonna keep coming back and disagreeing with administration, whoever we pay to do these things, then we need to get involved from the beginning so that we don't then keep putting them off.
It would, it would, it would give representation in projects too. It would keep them from getting the ones that, you know, it took six years to pay a parking lot, for example.
Yeah.
If that project had some board representation, maybe it wouldn't get moved down the road the, the way they have.
So Joseph, I'm confused about what administration has not followed, like, the board requested that the feasibility studies get done. And they were done, and now we're at the point where the board is voting on which feasibility studies to move on. Administration isn't involved in any of that.
I don't think we need to bring all the dirty laundry out to the public meeting.
But I'd like to have a private conversation about it too, because they were board driven. We had a board member that drove all those feasibility studies. They might not be here right now.
Sounds good.
All right, so are we settling on five million, forty-four thousand, six hundred? Or, I mean, did we wanna fund the whole county radio system upgrade and the whole school project? To come to about.
I don't see how you can not.
Whether you do it in this year or next year.
Yeah, you can spread out the spending, but.
Yeah, you can't start the radio or the, anything else and stop in midstream.
No.
Right.
And we know we've wasted two hundred thousand dollars if we approve a design.
That we don't pay.
That we won't pay, that we won't pay for.
The only thing that bothers me about doing anything like now in a project is cost, because they're inflated.
They're feeling.
Way, way inflated. I mean, it's unreal right now. When plumbing supplies, you might not even be able to get it.
Right.
You might not even be able to get toilets.
Well, I, I mean, I have a feeling this, it'd probably be over a year before they get a contractor bid. I mean, in reality, they're not, that's not gonna happen tomorrow.
Yeah, they had it, uh, you know, in that thing they gave us where they had each year, they broke it out over a number, it wasn't even like the whole once they built, they weren't even building all in one year, because they've gotta have a number of bathrooms, functional while you're doing the, it was like a two to three year project regardless.
Yeah.
But we do need to commit to the money. In its entirety or.
I'm not comfortable taking, committing five million right now and then the bathrooms next year. Cause it still lingers in my mind, the landfill could, could lose a contract and.
But this is money that we already have.
We have ten.
This isn't forecasted. We have ten already.
Yeah, but we've gotta replace it too. So I, that's just my opinion. I'll take a consensus of.
But not, I get you on replacing, but not spending doesn't replace it either. It just bumps a project further down the road.
Just said it will take a couple of years to even get to that point.
Right, all we.
So it's gonna let it sit there for two years?
All we do is allocate. I mean, we've got, we've got projects allocated that are two year, we do that every year with CIP. CIP is a planning.
I understand.
Yeah.
I know how it works.
I know, but they, and we, that is what we've got done with many projects.
What's on, what's the board consensus on borrowing funds for the radio project? Which would free up other funds. I know you said you did not like it.
I'm not for borrowing, because the, the landfill is, is unknown, and we may have enough to pay it back for a couple of years. I'm, I'm not for that.
I'm not for borrowing neither.
I just wanted to say that was an option.
No borrowing. We live in uncertain times.
Sorry.
I mean, everything could go south quick right now. I mean, we don't know where it's going with anything right now. You don't know what's gonna happen with Russia. You don't know if the food prices are gonna keep going up, fuel prices, any of that. I'd just rather be a little conservative, extra conservative to get in a jam. On that, if we got the money, pay for it.
But we're not doing that either. We have ten million, and now we're saying we don't wanna.
Well, we just said we're paying for the radio.
Yeah, but no, he's, I mean, he's, I mean, that's true, because David said we don't wanna spend all the money we have, because we need to replenish it in the future. Cause we could fund, we could keep going down the list. We're choosing not to spend all of our money. I'm not saying we should spend it all, it's just, we are making choices. Which are good, that's what we do.
Should do.
Yeah, but I think neither can speak in all, in extremes going, we're not going to, or we're going to, when we're just, we're doing in the middle of it. So I mean, it seems like we've got a, we've got a plan.
I think we need to clarify what we're doing again, because I think it's lost.
Okay. There's numbers. I thought you just read all those numbers. I'll read them again, I guess. Do you wanna write it down this time or?
I already checked it once, but then you brought up the radio and the bathroom, and then we're doing a full bathroom, and we're full of the radios, and then it was too much money, and so what are we doing exactly? Do you know exactly what we're doing? All right, tell me.
Same numbers you checked, and by doing the first phase of the, uh, emergency radio system, we commit that we'll have to do the second phase in future years, otherwise we've wasted two point eight nine six million. And while we're not committing the funds today for the bathroom, number seven, we are saying that by spending the two hundred and five thousand for it, we intend to move forward.
That we're not committing the, the two million for the bathroom. I thought we were. I thought that's what he said.
I just said.
No, what he said. I'm trying to get clarified.
I think it's actually the same, that we're not committing the funds now with what we are committing to move forward with the project, else we are agreeing we've wasted two hundred and five thousand. They'll come back, they'll have updated numbers from the planning project, and then come back to us.
If you're gonna put a number on it, we need to say that we, we commit to paying for the project.
Yeah.
When they come back with the project numbers. I mean, either way you wanna look at it.
That's all he said the whole time.
But knowing the estimated cost helps the budget.
It's still the same numbers, David. It's still the same numbers David read on.
So we committing the two oh five, or we just go hold it and let them come back with some planning?
We've said, and I mean, you can change it, you read the check mark for seven before, we said we were committing the two oh five for number seven. How would they, they've already got the plan prior to this, there's nothing to.
I was just getting it straight in my head. The only two we haven't covered is, is fourteen and sixteen.
And three, yep.
Well, I think we can.
And eight.
Yeah, we do agree.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Well, three we covered.
Yeah.
I don't think eight's gonna be viable.
I think, I think.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's advocating for eight here.
I'm a little starstruck at the, the bus stop fields lighting, because it lights it, Daryl puts up on fields, aren't near as that expensive.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I mean, I will speak it, you know, I'm, I'm pro, I'm pro fields, we need more fields, but until we actually make that a real field, we do kinda need to put lighting on it, I don't think. That field is not, it's not a legal field. You, you pitch uphill. It's, I try to avoid that field as much as possible. I, I don't mind, but I think that that should be a bigger, broader picture. We should get that field into a spec usable field and add lighting to it. That's a lot of money for a practice field. So that, but that's, I think that's gonna be part of a bigger Parks and Rec, um, evaluation that hopefully we'll be getting together and bringing to the board months coming up. So field upgrade.
Like, do you feel the same, but the video scoreboard, wait till we get?
Well, those are on, those, yeah, I think those are on, those are on fields that I think are already.
Yeah, they're already existing. I mean, that's.
I think one of them runs out the basketball court.
Yeah, it, it, you're right.
I mean, I can speak.
It's both indoor, indoor and the gym and the field, yeah.
What we have does not function very well, you know, both at the high school field and, and the girls, the county lot field, um, they.
I thought when we had our introduction to him, you remember he was talking about the, uh, basketball nets? That they were unsafe. I thought he was gonna have, is that included in this or something?
I think that's included.
Okay.
I think he put that in his operating budget.
Okay.
It's like maintenance and repairs.
Right.
And the grain skinning, that's not a huge amount of money.
Yeah.
Compared. I don't know why we couldn't just add that on there. Or I'm okay with that in the school boards anyway.
I'm okay with that.
I'll just say it that way. It's a little clearer.
I'm okay with that one, and I know Daryl and Glenn worked together on estimates for that, so I feel really good about the estimate.
And that's one of those, get directly back to the community, I, it's, you know, it's, yeah, people notice those things. And it's a good representation of the media when other counties come, that your teams have functional school boards that
Yeah.
Show all the correct numbers.
Yeah.
You good with that one, Tom?
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna kill us.
All right.
We all just gotta wipe this sheet out.
Well, these were only this year's priorities. Keep in mind, it's a sheet this size for every year going forward. Some years, much more than this.
Like, what's our total to now?
We're at five million, one twenty-four, oh six five.
You good, Dan?
Means allocation of five million next year.
Are you running that next, sir?
We can go back to the budget and confirm that up, about quarter to five. Bring y'all see the email from this wash.
Yep.
Where are we at on that?
Is there any? I'm sorry, can I ask one question? What you just pulled up, I didn't see the, where are we? I know the three seventy-five is in CIP. Did you, when you just said like the five million, whatever number, how does that factor to that?
Well, this will offset these costs by three hundred seventy-five thousand.
Okay, so it'll come on under five, it'll come in under five million, because you were five point one.
So net to less than that, yes.
Okay.
That's good though.
Yeah, that's, okay. Sorry, I just want, that was a transition item as we moved.
Cause this, I think we budgeted for the Wells Fargo building station in current year budget.
Correct.
And really not, nothing has started, so that'll all move on to next year.
Yeah.
That will fund that, yes.
Perfect.
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure I understand the commissioner revenues replacement, I'm, I'm not, I'm not following that, cause.
You got one employee who's retired. They're just gonna start that, start, and they were, start a new employee before the person retires. So that there's a overlap here. She, there's only a few people in the office, that's, that way she gets to have the overlap period to bring the new person up to speed, and they don't run into problems of continuity. To bring the new person up to speed and they don't run into problems of continuity. So it's all, it was like three, uh, I might remember the number of months wrong, but it was just a few months of overlap period.
So what was the starting salary of that new person? Would we double that number or, or do we take, I don't know.
I wonder anything about the commission.
Yeah, as long as, it has to be within her, within her existing budgets.
So that's still five hundred and five percent reduction to the schools? As it is.
It is.
And that's not what I'm recommending. It's just to go along with the, the other five percent cuts I've been transferred to. Let me know what y'all wanna do with that.
I'd like to see that one zero myself, but.
I would too.
After you did the math, I mean, they're only asking for a hundred and forty some thousand over costs they can't control over last year. That's.
Yeah, and I think we've, we've got five elected officials over there who already said this is the budget they need. I think those five elected officials should know better about theirs than, than we do. So I, I agree. I would like to not have that one.
I'd kinda like to keep it even. Across the board.
We go to five, we need to roll it all the way across.
It's not putting nobody in front. And you said it before, you know they gonna have a carryover.
Well, they already planned for their, I mean, their, their plan already incorporates the carryover.
The fuel was the biggest question there. That's gonna be a big question everywhere this year.
And they under, and as Carly said, they underestimated what they fear, fear that it will be. They already were conservative in that.
They changed that number though.
She's recent, she just.
So the only approved school board budget doubled the, the fuel line. The budget that you saw with a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar fuel line was our original proposed budget. That's submitted to the board supervisor. It was not submitted to anybody. That budget was put together before gas went to four dollars. So we proposed the original budget for the school board and that budget was developed in like December. And then so well before, and the school board just approved the budget a few weeks ago, it doubled.
Three something, three sixty or something.
What she said is less than what they actually project, but they're trying to be.
Can the, can the board live with that figure?
I can't, but.
I don't like the bottom figure by a long shot. And I mean, if you go back up and cut to the percentage of the raise from five to two and a half, I mean, we're not talking big, big numbers. I mean, what is it?
So keep in mind, if you do two and a half, some people still get five percent if they're under, that is gonna be the worst case scenario that the sheriff and others talked about. That creates dissension in the ranks.
Yeah, that's not a big, it's not a big number. That's what I was asking. Was it a big number? And it's not.
It only gets you back less than a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's not a big number.
Yeah, definitely not worth it.
It's not worth the turmoil. We already have that.
And just to reiterate, everybody, whether they're state or county, they gonna get to five percent. Comp board will take care of some and then we take care of the rest. That's the way we all understand that. We can look at it all night. How did it come up with a consensus?
I don't think we will reach a consensus. At least move forward, which we already seem to have. We've got three that wanna cut.
Thank you guys. All of us are trying to be conservative. Some more than others. To live within our means and that.
My point, you got a majority.
Thirty percent in there now.
No, right now it's, we're giving them a thirty percent discount.
Okay, thirty percent right now.
Correct. Yes. Cause that's what the original budget that was presented is based on.
These are the scenarios.
That's what we said originally. It was thirty.
And that's what you, yeah, said you wanted to stick by, you know?
Yeah. I think we should.
No argument.
Everybody good? I mean, that's what was said.
Someone up, you have a recessful hour. We can come back after the six?
No.
What are we gonna do?
What would we do?
I mean, I'd be perfectly fine with taking the school and putting it at zero and what that number is, I'm fine with it at the bottom of the screen. It'll be. One point.
Sound, I would agree with that. Or, knowing we're the minority, you go with what you got.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, I, I mean, for, for the record, I was perfectly fine with the one point two four four. I mean, I'll just say it. I'm done. I mean, there's nothing, unless we're gonna start firing the people. I mean, where else are we gonna cut? Where are you gonna cut?
I'd like to remind everybody, what we're trying to come up with is a budget that we can carry to public hearing. You can bring a budget that you can, you'll cut after the public hearing. But it's very difficult to add anything after the public hearing.
Thank you, that's good.
If it's going to take a tax increase. So I'm not, I wouldn't be sitting here thinking that everybody's gotta completely agree on what's gonna be presented. Just so it's something that can be worked with between now and after the public hearing. And you've got room to make.
And there's been no discussion about the need for a tax increase today regardless. So you're right. That's a great point.
I received the public input on, and thank you. I, I appreciate that.
Yep.
In which case, do we wanna zero, make this zero?
I, I would like to. Let's see what.
We just had to cut later.
See what the public, cause I've, I've had written many phone calls and emails about fully supporting the school budget. And I know I didn't bring that up earlier, but.
And so percent reduction in non-personnel.
I think all of us should have got those emails ever, sent everybody.
I got one. Yeah, I got one.
Are we still reducing all the other departments?
Yeah.
My question to you on that is gonna be, how do you, how do we, um, go about doing that? Ask each department to reduce?
I'd say however you calculated it. Same way, if you got five percent from every department, right? But isn't it just the exact same thing? I mean.
Well, I have to budget line by line. So am I deciding which line it comes from, or am I shooting this back to every?
I told to them and I would think it should be the head of the department. They know their department.
No, I agree.
Let them cut it.
Yeah. Yeah, but you won't have to do that for the advertising purposes.
Correct.
Cause you don't go down to that level for advertising. So that won't hold you up.
I'm, I'm still in favor of the five percent reduction across the board. We did the five percent raise across the board.
Yeah, we need to have the reduction across the board.
I'm, I'm still in favor. I know the schools gave us a budget, but we also need to get. Something we can do. We, we have done a lot in the capital improvements, actually more than I wanted to do. And we're still moving forward. Not one person.
I think you should take the, the five percent reduction because you've got a majority of the board sitting here saying that's what they want. Like, that's how we operate is majorities. It doesn't matter that two of us disagree with it. We vote all the time, three or two on stuff. You've got a clear opinion. Go for it.
We're just gonna have to get the citizens to.
And I hear you, Todd. I mean, they don't reach out because they know where you stand on it.
Oh, I just said I had one. That's a, he asked me, did everybody show?
I know.
I just said I had one. I still have it, but.
I get it. I'm just saying, they don't reach out when they know or get something individually. It just nature of any of the topics. I think you, you're five o'clock on the dot.
Yep. Roll it back up, please.
I'm assuming you want to cut five percent. I haven't heard from you.
I made one comment all day and that was a slam on me.
No one slammed you. You slammed your own self by opening your mouth.
He's in there. Get us back to, back to work.
I'm with this number.
One minute.
Alright.
Alright, it's five o'clock. If nobody has any objection, we'll adjourn and we'll send this to. We'll get the feedback from the department here. This is the least we present it.
We'll get the feedback from the citizens.
Alright, I'm gonna send this to the monitor by Friday afternoon.
Thank you.
Good.